At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have eight Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting?
Clerk, would you please call the roll? I'm sorry, would you please? Oh, my gosh. Please lead us in the prayer and the salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay. Now, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Certainly. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved now, Chair.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
You kind of caught me off guard here. What are we, yeah?
Okay, this is, uh-
We're approving?
We're approving the communications, sir.
Oh. Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative for the adoption of the communications?
Thank you so much. This meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. When you come to the podium, please state your name and town of residence for the record. Also, please note, if you are speaking on a specific resolution, please give us the number of the resolution, and please also adhere to the five-minute time limit. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board. Dr. Garrettson's out. Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Some questions on the resolutions, then I have some comments. The, on page four, number 489 near the top, it utilizes a competitive contracting procurement method for providing marketing services. Could you explain that a little more in depth? It's 490 right below that. It's on-call services to Net-a-Architects, and this went up 75 percent, 7,000 to 19,000. And then, my question is, why? Why is it jumping up so high? On page five, we have number 501 near the bottom. Director Moran mentioned about federal Monday. Just a question, is this going to be covered by ARPA funds? Page six, number 507 in the center. It seems to be an ongoing lawsuit. Dakota Fitzpatrick is representing us. HC Equities versus Union County et al. Could you explain a little bit? Give me an overview of what that is. Number 509? Yeah, Williams Nursery. It's, you know, you're sad, and I'm also sad about seeing it go. But my question is, why didn't you buy that property for the continuation of the Olmsted Greenway? Because that fits right in there like a puzzle piece. I don't know, somebody just wants to explain that. And then I do have some more comments continuing on what I've been talking about for the last two months. This is MV Strategies. And back on 512, I listed some points about MV Strategies and trying to get through Oprah various documents and such like that. And I said, if you could actually show us some documents, that'd be great, because, I mean, I keep going back to where MV Strategies had three-quarters of a million dollars, and it's earmarked as freeholder expense, which you, of course, said it was a scurrilous exclamation, although it's written right there. But anyway, the county manager actually mentioned a couple of other entities that used MV Strategies. And so I decided to Oprah a couple of them to take a look at it. Camden, he mentioned Camden. Yes, there actually was a $300,000 contract to MV Strategies, so that's fine there. However, I also looked at Middlesex and Hudson with an Oprah, and neither of those two actually knew anything about MV Strategies. And this is, the county manager said that they had contracts with it. They said no. Back on 512, you know, I did say, "Show me some documents," or something. And the county manager held up some paperwork. So immediately, sent in Oprah saying, "Yes, we'd like," you know, as at Oprah for the public, "We'd like to see what those documents are from MV Strategies" that the county manager held up. Well, that was 512. This is almost a month later, never got them. No documents are obviously available. And he had them in his own hand. He used them as proof. So, I don't know. You know, the Oprahs, many Oprahs were asking for, in early June, oh, yeah, yeah, here's one. In early June, we finally did get a plan written by MV Strategies. And that was one of the Oprahs that we were asking for for three months, and we finally got one, which, I don't know why we didn't get it immediately, within eight days. It's very suspect. And in addition, we're, Oprahs were sent in, three of them, for all the deliverables that MV Strategies is supposed to be giving the county. And these three Oprahs, we got in return that if we want any of the documentation, we have to pay $1,200. Now, that's astronomical, because anything coming from MV Strategies under MV Strategies' contract should be put into a separate folder identified as such. And yet, you know, you're saying, "Well, it's all over the place. You got to track it down, you have to have it reviewed." It doesn't make any sense whatsoever, you know? And so, I sit here, I talk to you guys, and it must just go in one ear, out the other, because you guys would just rather self-enrich yourselves with all sorts of stuff, like Hudak I mentioned going to be a surrogate. What was he, a lawyer for, what, one year now? And he's going to be the surrogate of the county. That's a joke. This is a joke on the poor taxpayers and residents of the county. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Patterson, you asked about number 489, 490, 501, and you had a comment about 509. I think I may have missed one of those.
507.
489, 490.
507?
501, which is it?
Right.
And 507.
507, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Deputy County Manager, would you please explain number 489?
Yes, absolutely, through you, Chair. We've had a need at times to advertise some of our programming, and we utilized the TAP that was questioned before. And there's bid thresholds for that. So rather than bid out every possible place we could need to advertise or utilize those services, we can use an agency that can do that for us as the middleman and just consolidate those purchases. So we're going to use the competitive contracting process to have someone do that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 490, County Manager, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. The amount went up, Chair, because of the need increased. And for the other question about the mobile ambulance, that is an eligible expense under the rescue plan.
Okay. Yes, that was number, 507. Okay. All right. And then, let's see. Number 507?
Yes, Chair, that would be me. Thank you. This is, as the Board knows, ongoing litigation concerning rental property. HC Equities is our landlord. The matter's been going on for quite some time. We did have the matter heard in part in the New Jersey Supreme Court, where they ruled in our favor. But there are still some ongoing issues concerning our lease. And so this is just ongoing litigation, which unfortunately, we continue to defend the county, and so we have to pay our lawyers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then regarding... Oh, okay. With regard to number 509, regarding Williams Nursery, actually, Director Drake, would you want to elaborate on why we do not own that property?
Yes, Chair, thank you. That property, for a long time, has been a part of Westfield's Affordable Housing Plan, so it was really never available to us. I know that Commissioners always work in concert with municipalities when we look for land to add to our RSC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The floor is still open?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak tonight. Number 479 on page two, Aquatic Analysts.
I'm sorry, sir, for the record, just give your name and town.
I'm sorry. Danny O'Sullivan, Summit, New Jersey. So, 479 is the lake management program by Aquatic Analysts. And it caught my eye, because I was in Bryant Park this past weekend, and it was a beautiful weekend, the park looks great. The pond is a constant source of query among residents in Summit. And I know we're doing some things, but I just wanted to be on your radar that it's constant. When we're out talking to people, everyone has questions about, "What's going on with this pond? It could be better." And I know it's an ongoing process, but I just want to make all of you aware that we constantly get questions on it. And if you would allow me one more, is that okay?
You have five minutes.
On the other- On the other agenda, can I make a comment on the other agenda? Your Commissioner-sponsored resolutions?
Uh-huh, sure.
Yeah. So I just want to thank you all for number four, which is the resolution supporting New Jersey Assembly Bill ACR 23, which is sponsored by Assemblywoman Linda Carter and Assemblyman James Kennedy, which memorializes Congress and President to enact legislation establishing certain gun control measures. And I want to thank you all for that support. And as an elected official myself at a municipal level, I will never have a gun control resolution in front of me. But I think it's important, and I gather it's probably the same for you. You're never going to vote on a gun control measure. But it's important that we know where you stand on gun control, gun safety, gun regulation. And I stand with you, and I want everyone to know that as well. And I'm so happy that we have Commissioners that are looking out for the safety and well-being of everyone. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. The floor is still open? Oh, actually, Director Zuber, is there anything you might want to add about the lake management program just to assuage the concerns of our friends in Summit?
Sure, through you, Chair. Bryant Park is on the list for treatment with Aquatic Analysts. But the work that's being done, that we're trying to do at Bryant Park right now, as you see by the garage out there, is we're waiting for permits to start that program. We have a 24-hour generator that we installed, and we're ready to do a clean flow process. We'll be churning up all the sediment, and we're just waiting on permits, so.
Thank you so much. Okay. The floor is still open? Okay, so I will close public comment. I guess, yeah, let's do our Commissioner reports, and we'll start with-
Chair, are we?
Oh, did I not-
Did I vote on the resolutions?
I'm sorry.
470 through 513.
It's been a very long week. I apologize to the public, yeah.
That's exactly what it is. I threw you all off. This is all my fault.
I know. We're doing Yankee ever since, yeah.
All right, may I have, okay. May I have a motion to formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions Number 2022-470 through 2022-513?
So moved now, Chair.
Second. Okay, moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Leon. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Thank you so much. Now we will have Commissioner reports and comments starting to my far left. Commissioner Dr. Garrettson?
Can I pass and follow? I just got, I need to just check something. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Leon?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Mr. Granados and the whole entire team that won in the primary, especially Vice Chair Hudak. I'm really happy that you're going to be our next surrogate, and I can't wait to see that happen. And going forward, also Chairwoman Rebecca, congratulate the entire team. Going forward, Union County continues to offer food distributions for our residents during COVID-19 pandemic recovery and rising inflation. There are two upcoming food distributions in June. The first one will be this Saturday at Kane University, and it's a drive-through. Residents wishing to pick up food at this drive-through distribution must arrive in a vehicle. There will be walk-ups, but this one is not a walk-up. The next one will be, the next walk-up would be on Saturday, June 25th, at the Gerald B. Green Plaza in Plainfield. The events will take place rain or shine. Residents picking up food at the walk-up event in Plainfield are encouraged to wear masks and should bring their own carts in order for them to be able to carry several food bags at the walk-up area. Food distributions are open to all Union County residents. Recipients will receive an emergency box of produce, dairy, and shelf-stable food with enough to sustain a family for several days. Please note that only one box of food will be provided per recipient at each event. The County Commissioners would like to thank Village Supermarket and the Gargilio Produce for their continued partnership in this effort. This is all for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by congratulating my members on the Commissioner Board, Chair Williams, Vice Chair Hudak, Commissioner Kowalski on your victories this primary, and to all those who won, and to all those also who ran. And it's never easy to run for elected office. And to those individuals who won and who lost, we thank you for giving a shot at even running when it comes to that. So thank you for that. And now, to move on to, as fiscal chair of our Commissioner Board, I'm pleased to announce that the County of Union's AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Moody's Investor Services. This is the highest reading a county government can achieve. This is a tremendous accomplishment, which demonstrates our commitment to fiscal responsibility, management of our tax dollars. Our fiscal committee alongside our Commissioner Board worked closely with our county manager and his county administration in producing a budget which was operationally efficient while remaining true to the values of our county and supporting our residents and their needs. This is not a new development in our county government. It is a result of fiscal discipline and an eye to the needs of all our residents. The results is a credit to leadership of our county government, and in particular, our county manager Ed Omen, Finance Director V.B. Taylor, and our county directors, along with our County Commissioner Board. I know we will continue to do our due diligence in looking out for the financial health of our county government, responsibly managing taxpayer dollars for many more years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Thank you, Chair. I too want to congratulate my colleagues and all of the other individuals who ran for office in the primary this past week. I also want to congratulate some of our county's graduates. I know some of our graduation ceremonies have taken place already, including my youngest son's kindergarten graduation yesterday. So I want to wish all of our preschool, kindergarten, elementary, high school students, and college students best of luck in whatever their next move is. Our farmer's market food voucher program is currently running through the Jersey Fresh Farmer's Market Voucher Program. This provides income-eligible seniors with vouchers to purchase fresh fruits, vegetables, and herbs at any farmer's market that displays the black-and-yellow WIC posters. The farmer's market program helps our seniors add more variety to their diets with fresh nutritious foods, and it provides a chance to enjoy the community atmosphere at our farmer's markets. Program totals $30 in vouchers in $6 increments. To apply for the vouchers, call our Division of Aging toll-free at 888-280-8226 during our regular business hours. For assistance in Spanish, you can call 908-527-4863. There's a limited number of vouchers that are based on availability on a first-come, first-served basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dr. Garrettson?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to gather my thoughts. Thank you. Give me a second, thank you.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair, and I offer my congratulations to my colleagues as well, to you, Chair Williams, and Vice Chair Hudak, and Commissioner Granados. And I also want to thank all the voters who participated. You know, turnout tends to be low for a primary, but it's important, it's still, it still is part of the process of choosing your elected representatives. And I just want to thank everyone who took the time to go and vote this week. So, we have a bunch of good things happening in our parks, including a new self-guided outdoor exhibit called the Solar System Walking Trail. And you can get a free, excuse me, a free mobile app to guide you along the trail. And it's, there's no fee, and you can visit anytime from dawn to dusk as Warren and Go, or not Warren and Go, Watch Young Reservation is open from dawn to dusk. And there's a special program at 2:00 this Saturday, June 11th, called Journey Through the Solar System. And there'll be an intro to the Solar System Walking Trail from a NASA volunteer. So I'm sure that'll be a very good program, especially for the young children and anyone interested in astronomy. So you can find out about, more about that and about all the great activities in our parks at our website, ucnj.org. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate my fellow colleagues, fellow Commissioners who are on column A that won their primary yester, uh, primary on Tuesday, excuse me. BJ Kowalski, and Sergio Granados, and Rebecca Williams, and certainly Chris Hudak. I have to ask, is Mr. Jeff Smith here? No? Okay. Well, on behalf of the Commissioner Board, I would like to welcome this gentleman who has served in the Navy. He's a veteran. He will be our new coordinator for the Union County Office of Veteran Services. Now, the Office of Veteran Services is staffed by Veteran Service Officers who are accredited by the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. Jeff and his staff are there to lend a helping hand to anyone who needs assistance in finding their way through the very large and complex system of military benefits. We deeply appreciate our veterans, our active-duty members of the armed services, and their families. And we are committed to reaching out, communicating, listening, and understanding the problems that our veterans incur. And we are very proud to have Jeff as head of the Office of Veteran Services. Now, to contact Jeff, call the office at 908-527-4918 during the weekdays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Or you can email him at w.jeff, which is spelled G-E-O-F-F dot smith@ucnj.org. More details about the office are available online at the county's website, w, I mean, ucnj.org/veterans. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll add my voice to those congratulating the primary winners from the Tuesday's elections on both sides of the aisle, particularly our new surrogate, Chris Hudak, Commissioners Kowalski, Granados, and Williams, who will certainly be re-elected in November. I look forward to continuing to work with them. And those elected on the federal and local level, too. It's a lot of work to put your name out there, and I'm glad we have good people still wanting to participate in the electoral process. This month is Pride Month, and really, we're off to a great start in celebrating. And I want to make sure everybody has a chance to join in. I know our Chair has probably raised more flags in the last couple of weeks than maybe in her entire previous career. But she's done a great job representing this county, being at these municipal flag-raising. It warms my heart that so many towns are doing their own events, and that's really wonderful. And I've had a chance to be at a few, and I know my colleagues have also spread out and covered the county to celebrate Pride in our county. This coming Sunday at noon in Plainfield is the Sage Table Community Lunch, intergenerational story-sharing event. I participated a couple of years ago before COVID, and it's a wonderful chance to get together and share some stories and some community with some good people. So if you have time and can attend, that would be wonderful. There's a lot of information on all these following events on our website. We have events almost every week. LGBTQ+ Trivia Night at the Tavern in Ashbrook Golf Course, the grand opening of a new inclusive park space, Tamiki Park, is that how you pronounce it?
Tamike.
Tamike Park in Cedar Brook Park, and that's going to be on June 18th, the same day as our Pride picnic. Virtual discussions about the impact of anti-LGBTQ+ laws, a mixer for professionalism in our community, a youth pride dance for ages 13 and up. I'm particularly excited for that. And a special presentation of the Broadway musical Head Over Heels at the Union County Performing Arts Center. All month long, you can visit the LGBTQ Say It! Art Exhibit, which opened last week in Raway. All events are free of charge. And for more details and registration for information, you can visit the Office of LGBTQ Affairs at ucnj.org/LGBTQ. So please, join me and the rest of my colleagues in attending these great events. It's going to be a wonderful month celebrating our diversity, our inclusion, and our acceptance. So please do that. I'm glad that Councilman O'Sullivan was here to speak a little bit on this gun control measure that was supported by all of us here tonight. And we've certainly been on the forefront of supporting improved legislation at the state level and at the federal level. This piece of legislation, and I'm glad the Councilman mentioned Assemblywoman Carter and Assemblyman Kennedy, who are sponsoring that in the Assembly. They are two leaders in our state for sensible gun control. New Jersey has among the toughest and most stringent gun control laws. But as you can see, we are trying to make that even stronger. And I think that's even more important in light of recent activity in our community. So I applaud the Assemblywoman and the Assemblymen. I'm happy to join my colleagues in supporting this legislature, this resolution to support federal reform. And I just hope both parties can come together on some- federal reform, and I just hope both parties can come together on some consensus, because it makes sense and will protect our children and our families and our people across this great country. With that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, I'm ready, thank you. As I follow up on hearing my colleague talk about LGBTQ Month and all of the wonderful flag raisings, it takes me back to 1619, and I think about this month as the federal holiday coming up, Juneteenth, and we have ignored this particular holiday nationally, federally, locally. It's the first year that we will be celebrating Juneteenth as a nation. Not only are we able to really think about how we will be represented, and hopefully we'll have as much excitement for this year throughout, you see sometimes people have missteps. I think there was a library or a museum that created a watermelon salad. That's awful. So we don't want missteps when it comes to some of these flag raisings, or just to be symbolic, but I am excited that Union County, that we will be hosting our Juneteenth flag raising on Sunday at 10 a.m. in front of the Union County Courthouse, very much like we just recently had a Portuguese flag raising. It was very lovely, very excited to be able to be there with my colleague Sergio in Lourdes, and also, of course, at the LGBTQ flag raising that we had earlier in the month. So I hope everybody comes and checks that out. I also want to share the sentiments that a lot of my colleagues talked about. I am very sad to hear about the Williams Nursery. I've been able to go there with my family, my little nephew, so it was really for all ages. So I do hope that, wish them well in their future pursuits, because they were a major service to our community. I'd also like to just kind of end on, this morning I had to go all the way down to Trenton, and I got to walk the hallways, but to see our Senate Majority Leader that hails from this county, Senator Scatari's office, so it was lovely just to see that there's so many impacts that are happening, not just here in this particular county, but that Union County does make a true impact all around the state. And I look forward to continuing the work that I do, to work collaboratively, and make sure that we are truly equitable and fair county and community, because again, that's what it's all about, right? So I gather my thoughts. Thank you very much, and those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Vice Chair, oh. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Hudak?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Good evening. An update regarding the status of the county's booster program. Pfizer booster shots for children between the ages of five and 11 have recently been recommended by the CDC. Five-to-11-year-olds are eligible for their Pfizer booster five months after their second dose. Currently, boosters for this age group are available at two of the permanent sites maintained by Union County, on Thursdays at Warren Echo Park Center between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m., and on Saturdays at Plainfield High School from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Appointments can be made on our website at ucnj.org/covid19, and walk-ups are always welcome. I just, you know, sharing the sadness regarding the news of the closure of Williams Nursery, and that certainly would have been a nice bit of property for the county to have purchased had it been an opportunity, but it wasn't. And we have a very good open public, a very good open-space team, which is very attuned to property opportunities throughout Union County. And it is hard not just to identify these parcels, but also to obtain them. And so, you know, recently, we worked towards closing a significant purchase in Berkeley Heights, and that was something that our team had identified a long time out and worked very hard to get that process completed. So it just speaks to the work that they do, how challenging it can be. And also, you know, at times, you know, we're asked, you know, about the cost of those sorts of acquisitions, and, you know, my thought is always that, you know, open space, large parcels of open space in Union County are very rare in this densely populated part of the state, and so we need to be aggressive when we have those opportunities. And, you know, you know, maybe Williams Nursery wasn't an opportunity for us, but we were able recently to make quite a significant addition to our open-space roster. I want to add my congratulations to Commissioners Granados, Chair Williams, and Commissioners Kowalski for a race well-run. I look forward to running with you in November, and congratulations to all those who ran and participated in the process this week, and that's really the most important thing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hudak. I just have a couple of comments, and first, I'd like to congratulate our county manager, Ed Oatman, who has been, is being inducted into the Pi Alpha Alpha Honor Society at Kane, at the Kane University chapter, so... And, you know, as you all know, as has been stated here by, I believe, just about everybody, this past week, we did hold primary elections, so on behalf of the entire board, I too would like, I would like to thank all residents who went out and participated and recognized that this is a very important civic duty for us to vote, regardless of whomever it is that you might vote for. As you also have noticed, because of the pandemic, we, well, during the pandemic, there were, you know, new and different ways of voting, and of course, the benefit to us as voters is that we now have several options for voting, including traditional voting at the polls on Election Day, we also have early person, early in-person voting, and we also have vote by mail. So as you think about November and moving forward, please keep in mind all the options, and please convince those others whom you know to please come out and vote. People did die for our right to vote. I believe our turnout was probably somewhere around 10% or 11%, so that's kind of sad. I too, though, would like to congratulate my running mates on the ballot, our surrogate candidate, Chris Hudak, as well as Commissioner BJ Kowalski and Commissioner Granados. We are always humbled by your support, and we will continue to do our best to serve all of the residents of this great county. And just one more note, as Commissioner Mirabella mentioned, we do have a lot of Pride events coming up. I'm really looking forward to Head Over Heels, which is the story of the Go-Go's. And you know that you're getting old when people say, "Who are the Go-Go's?" They were huge in the 80s, so. So with that, I wanted, I do want to say, "Happy Pride." Happy Pride, everyone, and we also do have a need to go into executive session, so I will turn it over to County Counsel, so that he can make a statement relative to exec session, tonight's exec session.
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This Board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged discussions concerning litigation matter, sorry, concerning litigation strategy in the matter of Reginald Curry versus Union County. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk of the Board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the Board may retire to executive session. Upon the Board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some move, Madam Chair.
May I? That was moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the, Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
This is to enter executive session? Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative to enter into executive session?
Okay, we're in executive sessions, you all in the bed. Okay, we're back. May I have a motion to return from executive session?
Some moves.
Okay, that was moved by Vice Chair Hudak, seconded by Commissioner Garrettson. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddet?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, that's nine votes in the affirmative to return from executive session?
Thank you. County Counsel, do you have anything to announce from our exec session?
No, thank you, Chair, nothing to announce at this time.
Thank you so much. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Dr. Garrettson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Good night, everyone.